So, let's switch. Good morning after good noon time to you all. It is good to be together for all the ways we are together in church for worship and for celebration and for prayer and for song and also for the work of ministry that we do together. So today, another in our Town Hall series by which we are hoping to make the process of the work of ministry here visible and approachable for folks. It is good to have you here this morning. We promise not to take three hours. We invite you to follow this with a trip down the road to start listening to those music concerts at each of the churches down East Ave. So if you need something to look forward to, I don't know why you would, but if you do, there's that. Our agenda is brief. We are going to have a time of opening prayer. We're going to talk about the 2025 budget. We are going to talk about plans to close the deficit that you all have already found out about through the pre-Town Hall materials. We're going to introduce the Financial Sustainability Task Force, answer the question, how can you help? Take your questions and then we'll close in prayer. So that's just the rough schedule of how we're going here. Tim Mahan and Dawn Reedy are here to lead us in this work, but I am here to lead us first in prayer. So I invite us just to, just for a moment, to call to mind, call to your heart, the things that are weighing on you, the things you're feeling anxious about, the things you feel like you need to know, the things that are troubling you. I want you to call those to mind. And then take a moment and call to mind those things that you celebrate about our ministry here at Asbury First. Knowing that all these things together make our community here. We are invited in the next little while to lay the anxiety aside, to let our hearts remind us of the things we love. And so we pray. Holy One, we are grateful for this time together, to gather as a community of faith, to know more about how we're doing and what we're doing to be Your church in the world. We ask that You guide us in this time. Help us to hear, help us to listen, help us to offer ourselves once again in service to You through the ministries of this church. Calm our anxieties if we are carrying any. Focus our minds to see You, to hear You, to follow You. We ask all of it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I guess that's my cue. Thank you, Michelle. Of course, on all, like all big days, I forgot my name tag today. So for those of you that I have not met before, my name is Tim Mahan. And just a quick background about my involvement with the church. I've been a member here for over 20 years. Recently, I've served as Chair of the Outreach Committee. I volunteer over at the storehouse. Our kids have gone through the youth program here. I'm currently serving on the governing board. For about six months last year, I was serving as the Acting Finance Chair for the Finance Committee, and Dawn stepped up to take over that role permanently. I do, well, permanently, for the next term. Yeah, thanks, Dawn. Didn't want to sign you up without you knowing. So thank you all for your interest and your engagement for being here today. We really appreciate it. So we're going to talk a little bit today about where we are with the 2025 budget now that we're about halfway through the year. And I really wanted to be the one up here talking a little bit about that since I was the one that presented the 2025 budget to the congregation at the Town Hall in December. So I'd like to share with you where we're at. Obviously, we have some challenges slash opportunities, and we want to meet those head-on, and we'll talk about that. Dawn is going to talk a little bit about some process improvement and some things that we are doing through the Finance Committee to do a better job moving forward and to bring some process improvement to how we manage our financials. And then I'm going to close by talking a little bit about the Financial Sustainability Task Force, which is another group that I'm currently a part of. So if we could have the first slide up on the screen there. So a little bit of housekeeping. Michelle referenced the materials that were put out ahead of time for the Town Hall. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look at those, or if you haven't yet, those are out there. We really spent a fair amount of time putting together frequently asked question, what we thought would be the questions that people would be asking when they were reviewing the numbers and looking at the numbers, and we put our best responses there, some of which we're going to repeat during the presentation today. But I think that we've been searching for and looking for increased transparency as a community in our financials, and I think we're on the way there, thanks in large part to a lot of work by Dawn and from John. And so those materials are out there, and I want to make sure that you have a chance to look at those. Secondly, just when we talk about budgets, we've used some different words and phrases over the years in terms of how we refer to our operating budget. In some instances, we've referred to the AOP, the Annual Operating Plan. And so I just want to clarify that as we move forward, we're going to begin to refer to our operating budget as the general budget. So the Budget for Church Operations is going to be referred to as the general budget, and then we have the Community Outreach Center Budget. So we really have two main budgets that we're going to be referencing moving forward, the general budget and the Community Outreach Center Budget. We've gone through a process of reforecasting 2025, and I'm going to, in the next slide coming up, talk through some of the major variances that we're seeing on both the income side and also the expense side. And I do want to start with some good news. And the good news is really focused on the Community Outreach Center Budget. And last year at this time, there was, I'll just say, a lot of question marks and a lot of things that needed to be straightened out with regards to the Community Outreach Center Budget. When we opened the Outreach Center, I don't know that we really did a good enough job. We were so focused on raising the money to build it that I think we probably in hindsight could have spent more time forecasting out exactly expected expenses, et cetera, to running it. And so as we have moved forward, through a lot of effort from Diana, from Dawn, and others, we've really put together a Community Outreach Center Budget that is sustainable in large part due to folks' generosity here. And some of our deficit issues with the Community Outreach Center Budget have been resolved. So we're in a very good place in terms of our budget with the Community Outreach Center. And so I think that's really positive news from where we were in the past. Right, we can go to the next slide. So this year's budget. In December, when we presented the budget for 2025, we tried to be transparent and communicate that it was a fragile budget. We didn't have a lot of wiggle room in case of unexpected events. We didn't have a cushion of money for unexpected events to come up. We also were utilizing a one-time source of funds, which was a portion of a bequest in order to meet our budget for 2025. And that money is not sustainable or repeatable year after year. And so there was a couple elements of the 2025 budget which we knew going in, it was a little bit fragile, as I would say. So what's happened as we've gone into 2025? Well, there's been really two big things. First, we're projecting, based on the first six months of actuals, that we're going to have about $148,000 less in income than we originally projected. Now, there's two main reasons for that. One is we found some documentation that made clear what the intent of the bequest was, and so we wanted to certainly honor that bequest wish, and so we moved the budget, or we moved that money out of our budget and into an endowment where it was originally asked to go. And so as we discovered that new information, we made sure we made the adjustment. The other part of a reduction in income is we fell a little bit short on our pledge from what we projected. So we had projected a certain amount for pledging, and we fell a little bit short of that number. This last year was the first time that we had really tried to complete the budget process early, earlier, before the end of the year. And as John has pointed out to us many times, it's difficult for people to really understand, for some folks, to really fully understand how much they're going to be able to commit to the church until later in December when their required minimum distributions from retirement counts, et cetera, become clear to them. And so that was a little bit of a piece of that. And we also projected, moving forward in 2025, based on current economic uncertainties, that we might not expect to receive 100% of the pledges. We typically receive anywhere from, I think, 97% to 102% historically of what's pledged for a given year. And we had projected for 2025 to receive 100% of what was pledged. We've downed that a little bit to, I think, 97%. And so based on those two factors, the bequest, a little bit of reduction in pledge income, and then we're reforecasting down what percent of pledges we can expect to receive, that's creating about $148,000 in expected reduction in what we're going to receive this year in income. On the expense side, we've had about $116,000 in expenses that have exceeded budget. And those are primarily in the facilities and custodial area, and I'll talk a little bit more detail about what's driving that. And then a little bit in our communication budget, about $6,000 in our communication budget. So the big driver is the facilities and custodial budget line. So if we can go to the next slide. So talking a little bit more specifically about facilities and custodial, what is that? If you read the bullet point on the slide, it's, there's an element which is non-personnel expense, things like utilities, electricity, gas, water, maintenance and janitorial. Those are supplies, everything from, you know, the paper products, et cetera. And then uncovered maintenance and repairs, things that aren't covered by our contracts. So those are elements of what's included in the facilities and custodial. So why is that budget line over budget this year? A couple reasons. First, we had some carryover expenses from 2024, which frankly, I don't think we adequately budgeted in for 2025. And so that was a mistake, and that's something that we're looking at now. We had some HVAC invoices from our contractor, Leo J. Roth, and we were negotiating back and forth on some of those, and those were in 2024. And we reached resolution and agreed to pay the amount, but those payments occurred in 2025. And so those expenses got pushed into 2025, and that's a portion of why we are over budget there. Our electricity use is up, and it's up more than we had budgeted for. And there's a couple reasons for that. One reason is just the cost per kilowatt has gone up. So if you're paying your RG&E or your electricity bill at home, I'm sure you've noticed that energy prices are going up. If we look at the trend line for the church as a whole, and you go back three, four years, our energy usage was at pretty low levels during COVID because the campus wasn't being used very much. So the buildings weren't open, we didn't have, you know, all the activity on campus that we had. And as we've returned to a more normal or regular, I'll say, church-community life here, utility usage is going up in response to the campus being used more. So the good news is we're using the campus more, but that's also contributing to driving extra utility expense. And I think that is it. Oh, and then we did have a major unexpected expense related to the boiler. So in wintertime, one of the boilers was on the fritz. It was so cold in the education wing that the daycare actually had to close for three days. And so there was a real emergency that we had to react to in order to get heat back on so that our tenant could conduct their daycare there. So some unexpected expenses, some carryover expense from '24, and some increased usage are really the drivers for what's causing some of our expense lines to go over. And if you look at all those things together, the fact that we are receiving a little less income than we projected, that our expenses are up, as we project out for 2025, we're probably looking at a gap of about $260,000 to $265,000 between what we're bringing in in income and what we're spending. And so that is part of why, you know, we're here today to explain that to everybody. This is where we're at. And we have some plans in place to try and close that gap for this year, and then we will be working in the future to try and address some of, I'll say, the structural deficit, long-term issues that I think we've been wrestling with for a few years here at the church, and now it's time to really take some definitive action steps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dawn. And before I hand the mic over to Dawn, I just did want to say a note of recognition for Dawn. Dawn is a force of nature, as I've described to several folks. And as a church community, we are really benefiting from Dawn's energy, her expertise, her willingness to dive in and surface tough issues and really help facilitate the conversations that we need to have. I literally think she's spending 30 hours a week plus diving in with different meetings, making sure stakeholders are brought along the way and involved. And I really appreciate all the work that she's doing to help us move forward to a better place, and I hope you appreciate the work that she's doing as well.
That's very kind. I do this because I love this church, and I think that's why we're all here for the same reason. So if I could have the next slide, please. I mean, we presented now this, well, only back up a second. I'm Dawn Reedy. I am serving as the Chair of the Finance Committee as of the end of February of this year. Prior to that, I was on the Outreach Committee, did a lot of work, have learned a tremendous amount from John Ormsby about how the financial systems of the church work, was able to work on a COC budget last year that's been very successful, and now using all that I've learned in doing that work to extend it to the general church budget. I think it's really important that this is a learning organization, and we are literally all in this together. So everyone has a role to play, and sometimes my husband teases me about all the spreadsheets that line the walls of our house, but I'm very organized and I, you know, one of the ways that I've always led is by the principle of no magical thinking. I'm just straight up, one and one is two. You might want it to be three, it's never going to be three, it's always going to be two. And that's the way that I've approached this. So what is the Finance Committee doing about what we've learned in the first five months of the, now six months of the year? First of all, we've reinvigorated the Finance Committee. And you all were provided with a list of the membership in an email that went out a couple weeks ago, and that's one of the keys to this because we now have folks representing the Investment Committee, the Giving Team, the Legacy Giving Team, PPRC, PSC, Property Stewardship Committee. Everyone is around the table, and we're updating each other on a constant basis. We've also worked hard to improve the way we're looking at monthly financials with a renewed emphasis, not just on how did we do last month, but how are we doing year-to-date? And how does year-to-date this year compare to year-to-date last year? And this month this year to this month last year? There's seasonality to many of our expenses, so it's not as simple as 1/12th, 1/12th, 1/12th. But we can certainly learn from, if we're looking at March, what did March look like a year ago? We're also looking at what percentage of our expenses budgeted have already been spent at a given point in time, and that's what we saw at the end of the first quarter. After three months, we could see that some of the facilities and custodial expense lines were already at 75%, 80%, 85% of the annual budget. And it would have been magical thinking to say it's going to turn out all right in the end. And that's why we put a group of people together, led by John Ormsby and a lot of other folks, got around the table and did the hard work of saying, okay, we need to go back to the drawing board. What are the real numbers so that we can, you know, we can get through the year? Strengthen our budgeting process. We're doing a lot of work towards strengthening the budgeting process. We know that the area of the budget that is the most challenging year over year over year is facilities and custodial. So with support from the Property Stewardship Committee, the Finance Committee is forming a team called the Facilities and Custodial Budget Team, and Jim Connell has very graciously agreed to lead that team. So we will have another level of support to help us as we navigate supporting Johnny Cologne, who is a wonderful asset to this community, and supporting the work of our new Director of Operations and the work of the Finance Committee, and making sure that we have clarity about what is the responsibility of the Property Stewardship Committee versus what belongs as a budget line. So that is a huge process improvement. We're going to face, well, we're going to face, we faced our structural deficit. I spent a lot of time in February, March, and April doing a pretty comprehensive 10-year look back of all of our budgets, our general budget, our Dining and Caring Center budget, and then the new COC budget when it came into existence in 2023. And we have a structural deficit. We've been spending about $200,000 a year for a number of years, more than our regular income. And by regular income, I mean pledges, plate offerings, endowment interest draws, property usage. We were very fortunate to get a large sum of money from the government during COVID to the tune of $560,000 that we used. We used to cover that structural deficit for a number of years. That money has been used. It's done. It's gone. So we have to face this, and we're going to face it, and we're going to figure it out together. And it is the commitment of the Finance Committee, together with the Financial Sustainability Task Force that I'm also part of, that Tim is chairing, that we will present a balanced budget that's sustainable to the congregation. We're not going to rush this. We don't have to do this in December. We are very likely going to do this towards the end of January to give some more time. And we will continue to build on all the gains we built last year, which is huge progress in getting all of the work areas, ministry areas, and committees involved in the budget. The budget does not belong to the Finance Committee. The budget belongs to all of you. It's the story of what you want to accomplish together as a community. And in order for it to be an accurate story, it needs to come grassroots from the bottom up. And we made huge progress doing that last year, and we will continue with that this year. So next slide, please. So what are we doing about expenses for this year? On May 19th, a memo was sent from the Finance Committee to all work areas, staff, and committees explaining the situation, the deficit that had been identified, and asking folks to prayerfully discern what adjustments could be made to the current year's budget, focusing on what is needed to keep our campus safe and what expenditures have, and this is from former work life, but rapid return on investment. When does it make sense to replace something rather than putting a whole bunch of money into repairing it and then replacing it? So that's rapid return on investment. In the non-personnel expense category, and these are all really tough decisions with very pared-down budgets to begin with, but the Property Stewardship Committee, which had a $75,000 allowance this year to address capital improvement needs, the Capital Improvement Fund, or the CIF, voted to give back $30,000 of that for this year. That's not sustainable because it just means we're going to put off things. This is an aging campus, and there are lots of different things that need to be done here, but they've agreed to hold back $30,000 for this year. The Outreach Committee had an $11,000 allowance to support off-campus ministries, outreach ministries, beyond what we do in the Community Outreach Center and emerging needs in the community. So that was an $11,000 budget, and they voted to give back $5,000 of that. So we are reducing the amount of off-campus ministry support for this year in support of the budget. And then the final piece of that was about, I got to get my numbers all straight, $3,000 in administrative expenses that were pared down in the budget, and those are things like computers and internet and just fine-tuning what was in all of those categories. The big tough one is the personnel budget. That is still a work in progress, and I'm going to step aside for a moment and let Michelle address that.
You all have heard that we've had some adjustments in our staffing with the retirement of David Strong. Bless him forever. He is not leaving Asbury First. He is still going to be here, so we are very glad for that. We are very glad that Deb Bullock Smith has been offered that position and has said yes. And that Holly Temming has been offered Deb Bullock Smith's current position and has said yes. It is wonderful when we have wonderful people on staff who are ready for new things. What that is yielding us, I do not... What that is yielding us, I do not have an exact number right now, but that is yielding us some room in our personnel budget for 2025. That won't necessarily hold till 2026 and beyond because just timings and things like that. We're doing, we're looking at the entire staffing structure here in this, in the middle of this transition, just to see if we've got it right and what adjustments we need to make in our staffing structure. And some of that will probably yield a reduction in the budget, but we're still working on that. PPRC is working with us to sort of take an overall look with their expertise about personnel and staffing. We've got wonderful people on the PPRC who can help with that. So we're looking at the whole structure of staffing on this campus, just to see what we can come up with. I think that's all I can say at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, so next slide, please. How are we going to fix the income side of this? I, you know, the day I figured this out, that we had a problem, and it wasn't a little problem, I thought back to the Sunday last summer when Diana Carter stood in front of the congregation and said, "We have a shortfall in the COC budget. We have a $95,000 budget line. We're at $14,000. And this is what we do there, and if we're going to keep doing it, we all have to step up to the plate." And you did. Everyone did. And that budget line that was $14,000 at the end of June was $117,000 by the 1st of October. So exceeded budget by over $20,000 in that budget line. And there was, I mean, extreme generosity, radical generosity, and it's that same kind of radical generosity that I believe is possible again. I think part of what we all need to do a better job of is educating each other about what it actually costs to run the community we call Asbury First. And very simple math, very simple math, this is a $2.5 million budget. And if you divide by 356, that means every day of the year, it costs $7,500 for this campus to be open, to heat and light and personnel and programs, everything that goes on here. That's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. So, you know, Matthew 5:41 tells us, if you're asked to go a mile, go the second mile. And that's why we're calling this the Second Mile Giving Campaign. It really is a request for a generous gift to meet a common need. And we started at $264,000. With the cuts, the expenditure reductions of $38,000, we were able to get that down to $225,000. And then in the last two weeks, there have been quiet phone calls going on. Members of the Governing Board, members of the Financial Sustainability Task Force, Committee Chairs, and some, but not yet all, of our top pledges. And as of right now, today, we have just a tiny bit short of $104,000 raised. So we have gone from 264 to 225. Keep me honest. 121. 121. So we're on our way, and we're pretty confident that we're going to show some savings on the personnel side that, you know, that may get us, that is going to get us a little more. But we're also being very careful not to give numbers that we're not sure of. So those are the numbers we can give you today. Do you want to speak to the all-congregation giving, Michelle? Or to the all-congregation giving that's...
So as Dawn has pointed out, we've already done some work, some very intensive work to get as far along in alleviating that budget gap as possible. And I've got to thank so many people for that. I've got to thank John for your careful work and your constant work on all of this for the last six weeks, and for Dawn and Tim for putting this together so that we can see and hear and know exactly where we are. So that 100 and what?
21.
121 less whatever comes out of the personnel restructuring is up to us. You'll be getting communication this week or next from the Giving Team, well, we're now calling it the Generosity Team. We are rebranding, might as well. We're going to have enough transition going on here, let's do something else. So the Generosity Team will be reaching out to you in the next week or so, likely by email, because, you know, a paper mailing costs some money. So watch your emails, asking you to consider what you will do to help. The ask is given at the same time as I tell you that we are working so hard to be in a place where we don't have to do this again, where we don't come up with a gap earlier in the year, right? So we don't have to have an appeal. It is my fervent hope and prayer and understanding that the work, the careful work that all of these folks are doing, along with the Finance Committee and the Sustainability Task Force, will get us to a place where we are not asking for extra in the beginning of a year. Can I guarantee it? I can't guarantee anything. Can I tell you that that is our goal and that is what we are working hard to achieve? Yes. And I can tell you that so many folks will be working on that this year. So there it is. The congregation has been jump-started by these cuts and by these generous donations, and it's our turn now. We're asking not only that you think about this in terms of what you will give this year, but will you continue that extra giving into your 2026 pledging and gifting plans? Because as we've said, this is a structural deficit. So I think that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thanks, Michelle. And thank you for the folks that I called on the phone. Thank you for your friendly voice on the other end. I've spent 33 years in Wegmans in the procurement department, figuring out ways to say no to salespeople. So to be on the other end and be calling and asking was a little bit of a new thing for me. So the last slide on the Financial Sustainability Team, please. Thanks. So we've referenced a couple times the Financial Sustainability Task Force, and the task force consists of myself and Dawn, Dave Allen, Chuck Hanrahan. We also have Rick Phillips, who's leading our Legacy Giving Team, Patrick Fulford, Michelle is part of that, and Pat as well. So we've got a great team with a wide array of talents and perspectives and involvement in the church. And for the first couple meetings, we've met twice so far. We were really focused on working with the Finance Committee on how to address the immediate need to close the budget gap for 2025. And I think we've helped to the degree that we can in that area. And in meetings moving forward, we're really going to be looking at longer, longer-range issues or questions that we can maybe help the church address. And what are those, what are examples of those types of questions that we're going to be looking at? Number one will be, how do we help the Legacy Team grow the endowment? The endowment is going to be a critical part of our future financial sustainability. As Patrick has pointed out, the interest draw off the endowment is the equivalent of about 220 pledges, pledging units per year. So it's an important part of how we meet our annual budget. And so we really need to focus on how do we grow that? And how do we make sure that that's keeping pace with inflation in terms of the amounts that we're putting in? And I think we've got some good people that are focused on that. There are some tactical things that we can look at. Energy usage is one that is important to people. Diana's talked to me a little bit about that, and I know there's some others in the congregation that have stepped forward that have experience with, you know, solar arrays and doing different types of energy options. And so that will probably be an area that we will explore. Really, there's no magic to financial sustainability. It's really how do we generate more income and how do we keep expenses in check? And so generating more income, I think part of what the Financial Sustainability Task Force will be thinking about and trying to help with is how do we, how do we help bring new people to the congregation? How do we bring new members in? How do we help the folks that are currently here feel more engaged and more part of the community? Because when you feel more engaged and more part of what's going on here at Asbury, you're more likely to give, frankly. I was at a, I was, Johanna and I were at an event on Friday. We went to hear John Messenger's band play. And there was probably 25 people there, at least, from the Community Theater Group and others, but it was just the sense of belonging and the sense of community that we had in that group that's really open to everybody. That feeling, for me, generated a strong sense of wanting to contribute and wanting to give. And so in our church life, there were vehicles in the past, I'm thinking of Sunday School as an example, Adult Sunday School, that really helped generate that sense of community and belonging and community. We need to make sure that we're reinvigorating those opportunities and we're finding new ones. Maybe not trying to recreate what was done in the past, but thinking about some new ways to accomplish that same goal. Those are some of the ways that I think I foresee the Financial Sustainability Task Force working over the upcoming 12 months as we try and chart a more stable financial picture moving forward. So with that...
We'll do questions at the end, right? How you can help. We've already talked about that. You've already heard the sense of need and hope at the same time. And so my first go-to is always prayer. You can pray. Pray for our church. Pray for the folks who are doing all of this work to make sure that we can craft a sustainable future for Asbury First. Consider how God is leading you to support this community that you love with, as Kathy often says, your time, your talents, and your treasure. How is it that you're living out your membership vows of offering your prayers, your presence, your gifts, your service, and your witness in community with everyone here? Consider that. Hold that. Of course, you can give a Second Mile gift. There are many ways you can do that. And up on the screen in a minute, the next slide will have all sorts of ways you can do that. You can, I love technology, you can text to give this morning from your seat, from your phone. You can look at the QR code and scan that with your phone and give that way. You can give us all the cash in your pockets. You can write a check. However you are feeling moved to support this, we would like to make that as easy as possible for you. The other things we can do are... Oh, there was another good one on there, wasn't there? I haven't memorized it. I'm terrible at it. Oh, he has a bet. Thank you. As I mentioned before, you can plan for your 2026 giving. We commit to making the ministries of this church work. We commit to being Christ's voice in this world, in this broken, bruised, overwhelming world. How will you support that going forward? Plan for your 2026 giving now, if you possibly can. And participate by staying informed, asking questions. The Finance Committee's names were all sent out in that letter. There are staff people who can answer your questions, and if they can't answer, they know who to ask or who to send you to. Participate with your prayers, your presence, your gifts, your service, and your witness.
Thank you. On the participate side, and I meant to say this earlier, but the Finance Committee is absolutely committed to making sure that you all have access to meeting minutes, to documents produced by the Committee, to the materials that we shared here. The Governing Board is committing to a new process that will allow us to be able to post the minutes within about two weeks of when the meeting occurs. If you go on the, it's Asbury First Governance Committees in Action Finance Committee, you will find all of the minutes since I became Chair. You will find the updated charter for the Finance Committee, what the tasks are ahead of us. You will also find all of the materials that were shared with you in the mailing on Monday. We also, when we're done, we have some print copies of those materials as well for anyone who may not have access to the internet. So we want to make sure everybody, and even if you do, you can take another print copy. We want to make sure everyone has access. So if we could go to the last slide, please. These are all the different ways you can give. And tell your friends, your family, your kids, your parents, you don't have to be a member to give to this church. And we have some pledge cards. And on the back of the pledge card, there's a QR code, and the QR code takes you to all the Town Hall Financial Meeting materials. So there are many different ways to give, as Michelle said, cash, check, pledge online, give online, whatever works for you. If there's something that you've thought of, a way to give that we haven't thought of, please just let us know. John Ormsby and Holly Temming are a phone call away if you have questions about funds transfers or any of the mechanics of giving. And I think we do have pledge cards here. So we will have these at the end of the meeting, and I think now we can transition to questions and hopefully some answers. We, is someone monitoring the questions online? Okay, do we have any yet? No questions yet. Okay, but we are, we, this is a live stream meeting, and there was a way to do questions online. I also want to remind people that finance@asburyfirst.org, it's for real. It comes straight to my Gmail. And I had five, five or six emails this week, including two volunteers offering to help, one with energy savings opportunities and one with helping us manage the cost for janitorial supplies. So that's a real, it's a real email, and you can really email me and I'll answer you. So questions and answers. Lori? Or, I'm sorry, Donna? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dawn. We're just interested, the amount that Michelle talked about, that is, we're going to be notified some more about that, my understanding is from what was said in the next several days or so or weeks. And is it correct that that amount has a certain time span? It's, your hope is to collect it by a certain date? And then I noticed or recall that usually that the later part of the year is when we move to... move to calculating the budget for the next year.
Correct.
And it's going to be kept separate of that. Is that correct?
Yes. So the second, oh, okay. Ooh. Is, are we going to be receiving, are you all going to be receiving emails about Second Mile giving? And what is the timeline for Second Mile giving? That's pretty much the question. Okay. Yes, you will be receiving an email about Second Mile giving, but you don't have to wait for the email. You have all the information you need to go ahead and give. Those are going to be reminder emails. So you can give today, give yesterday, give tomorrow. So they're just going to be reminder emails. We are hoping to have this wrapped up as quickly as possible. This is the amount, 121,000 now, that we need so that we don't end up at the end of the year in a hole, starting next year. You're absolutely right that the next steps are to begin to craft a 2026 budget, and with the 2026 budget will come a stewardship campaign for 2026. So Second Mile giving is all about closing the 2025 deficit.
How many pledging units do we have? And how many do you think are in a position that they can, you know, step up a little more?
So this year, for the general budget, we had 347 pledging units. I cannot tell you the exact number of pledging units we have. That's a hard calculation because it's households. I don't, John, do you want to, do you have a guesstimate of the number of pledging units we have in toto?
It's about 350.
Okay. No, I mean, that's the number that pledged this year, but any sense of how many pledging units don't pledge?
We get probably a hundred.
Then they're not a pledging unit. How many additional pledging, how many potential additional pledging units? Few hundred. And the answer to your question, do I know? No, I don't know individuals' personal circumstances. I mean, we, that is, that is going to be a matter of, you know, each family's conversation. Yeah.
As Dawn said, you know, when you, when you start trying to get too much insight into how much an individual is pledging and whether there's more to give, that's difficult because that's obviously a very personal decision. And there are, you know, everybody has things going on in their lives that others don't know about. Globally, if we, if we look at, you know, average incomes in Monroe County, average incomes in what we would expect our church congregation, just if the membership of our church is relatively consistent with the demographics of Monroe County. And then we look at the annual pledging per person. In general, our pledging units might be pledging somewhere between 2% and 3%. So that's kind of where we're at. So is there an opportunity to grow that? I hope so. But the way to, I think the way to grow that is to help people feel more engaged with the community here and what's going on versus, you know, wagging a finger and saying, hey, you're only at X percent, and you need to be at this percent. So I think we, I think what we really need to do is get people more engaged and more involved in our community, and that's a way that we can increase the giving per folks.
Do you need workers? I mean, do you need guys that can work? I mean, I'm a good carpenter and mason. I'm Canadian, but.
We love Canadians here. We love everybody here. So thank you. That's a very kind offer, and maybe we can follow up with you at the end of the, at the meeting.
I'd be happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you.
Leave it right in front of you, who you want to see after this, right there, right there. Okay? All right. I see. Bob, did you have your hand up?
I'd just like to thank Michelle for honesty and openness. This is very different. We had a structural problem, as they said, that transpired over years, and your openness and honesty and transparency is greatly appreciated.
So of the 121,000 roughly that we're trying to make up the difference for, is the money, is there deficit both in the operating budget for the church and the COC?
No. So that's the beautiful piece of this. We, the deficit on the COC side was related to the increased facilities and custodial costs. So, and it was $18,500. And the outreach committee met and made a decision that rather than hiring an experienced part-time case manager, we would continue with part-time student interns. And we had an intern in the spring. We will not have an intern over the summer. We'll have an intern in the fall. And by doing that, gap fixed. There is no deficit in the COC budget for this year, thanks to your generosity.
So just to build on that a little bit, I don't want us to walk away thinking the COC budget is fixed for all time.
Oh, no, 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 no.
There are, there are some gifts in the 2025 plan for COC that may not be repeatable, and they're sizable. And the work that we've done has been extraordinary to get to where we are, and it's a success we should celebrate. But let's not get so.
No.
Minded that we feel, well, that problem solved forever.
No, no, no. And actually, just to foreshadow, and we'll, we'll give more updates in the future, but the outreach committee already has a gap analysis for next year. We know what we need to raise in pledges for next year for current program, and we know what we'll need to raise in pledges if we want to add a meal per week. We also know that one of the reasons we're offering the option of a COC pledge is so that we can have non-church members support the COC. Over half of our volunteers are non-church members. We just got that off the ground last year. We had four non-member pledges, including one very sizable gift. And so Pat Fulford, Diana Carter, that, the whole committee is already at work thinking about that for next year. So, and we're going to have this year after year after year. You know, David and I did a quick little analysis of our, we're on a budgeting program at our house. David's up in the booth, so he can't hit me for saying that. But, but the cost of food has gone up 10%. We track our expenses by, I mean, it's literally just 10%. And so this is like, I mean, this is like a family budget on steroids, but it's a family, it's like a family budget, right? And the cost of everything is going up year over year over year over year. Okay.
I know from personal experience that under the prior regime, we lost several members in my age group. Is there anything being done as far as attracting that group back to Asbury? They were very long supportive members.
What age group did that be?
Seventies and eighties.
You know what? I think we all have an opportunity as we know those folks. If you know somebody in that category, reach out to them. That's not Michelle's work. That's our work. Right? These are people that we know. If you think there's someone who wandered off because they weren't happy with whatever it is they weren't happy for, about, invite them back. I think that's on all of us, honestly. I, maybe you have a different opinion.
When you say lost, are like, lost, lost? Or lost, stop, stop coming to church?
Gone to another church.
Stop coming to church. So, yeah, I would agree, I would agree with Dawn that, you know, membership and participation, whether it's reaching back out to folks who have lapsed a little bit and encouraging them and inviting them and making them feel welcome to come back, is part of, part of what we need to look at. And attracting new members, especially younger families, lifeblood of any church, I think those are priorities for us as an organization. Now, is there a specific task force that's assigned to that? Or is there a group that's focused on that? Not at this moment, but I know that there will be. I know that that'll be part of our effort.
What gives me hope, I sat like four or five pews back this morning, and I turned around and saw three women I'd never seen before. I introduced myself to them. They're new to the church. They were someplace else. They found their, actually, they know a pastor that Michelle knew. They got referred here by someone, a connection. But they're very happy to be a part of the new mem, I mean, they're not members yet, but they're new to the congregation. Okay. But then down the pew from me was, there were three other people. It was a father and a child and a spouse. The father moved into a condo across the street three months ago and has been looking for a church. The kids were here from Ohio and said, let's try that place across the street, and they were blown away. So there is, we got to keep at this. And again, that's what those little cards are for. And it's not, the staff can't do this. We have to do this.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I believe it was Bob Castle commented before, and thank you, Tim, Michelle, for your leadership. Obviously, there's a lot of energy, and that's part of what it takes. I think one thing I would say, you commented earlier, one plus one does not equal three, and the fact we're recognizing that, I think is a big step forward. Beverly and I have been members for 40 years. We've seen lots of challenges discussed in this sanctuary. We've, the sanctuary, the congregation has always responded, and it's always amazed me how much they respond, and I think they'll respond in this case also. So thank you all, and all those folks that are behind you, you've mentioned them, but there, at least to my knowledge, there's quite a large number of people working on this problem. So thank you.
Thinking about what you just said about the visitors or new people coming into the church, is there a plan? Or has there been thought given to how we encourage individuals who have been coming regularly, maybe for years, but may not have become members for regular giving, sustainable giving perhaps? You know, ways that they can give and feeling welcome to give, even if you have not become an official member, how valuable their input is into the supporting the activities of the church?
I think I'll just say that that is ongoing effort all the time. And, I mean, it's, it's one of the pieces I take on as, as pastor here, is helping people live into their fullest version of themselves and who they want to be here at Asbury First. And that's, that's a work of time. I do it differently than people who've come before me, and so that's, that's just a culture I'm trying to help grow here. So that's, again, a community work and a community effort. And I hope we can get there.
Hey, I'm Andrew Hunt. Some of you know me. I just want to share sort of a request to the Financial Sustainability Team, I think, as, as you're thinking about all that you're thinking about. I learned when I was teaching at Wells when they closed, that there's this thing called the demographic cliff, that some of us who are in education and follow like birth trends know about. I didn't know about it, but apparently people have known about it for 20 years, and so I want to share it with you. What it means is many less people were born about 20 years ago than typically have been. There are literally fewer people. What the, the bad thing for educate, higher education, is that that means there are fewer people to pay tuition. And so if you subscribe to a scarcity mindset, which I hope we won't, but my Board of Trustees did, it meant we had to commit harder, throw more money into getting students, and we didn't have that money, and so we closed. So I think that the challenge is to, to believe what we have all been saying, that we can do this, we can continue to grow in a healthy way, and that that means new members in the circle of life, right? But also to think about the fact that there are fewer people that we're going to be asking to join the church. And just, just to give some thought to that, without, without leaning into like abundance, please, right? That's what we believe in. But just to make you aware that that's a thing demographically.
Well, I appreciate the comment and how I think about it, or to answer your question would be, yeah. If you go back to 1980, this, the economic structure of this church was based on this many people are attending, and this is what they're giving, and these are the programs that were, that were running. And so as we talk about, you know, the structure, I think we, we have to look with new eyes at what, what does the structure of this church mean moving forward? It may not necessarily be duplicating everything that we were doing in the past. It may mean doing things a little differently or in a different way, based on those realities that you're, that you're talking about. And people behave differently today than they did 20 years ago. And so there's changes in our culture. There's changes in how people view church and their involvement with church. There are changes in demographics. And so we really have to look, I think that's part of what the, the task force is going to help surface, not as a small group, but really by engaging the whole congregation, is how, what does the future structure of this church look like?
You can use the same finance@asburyfirst.org email if you have, I mean, it's certainly for questions about the budget, but if you have ideas that you would like the task force to consider, we're very happy to have input. That's just an easy way to, to get it to a central, a central place. She'll bring you the mic.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. People can't hear you. Hold on one second.
One of the things I've been reading about and hearing about is Trump's willingness to have all churches taxed. Is there anyone who is working on refuting this desire of his?
At the local church level here, I would say probably not. I might defer to Michelle to understand if, is there, the United Methodist Church reacting in any way to discussion by the administration about the potential attacks, churches, or other nonprofits?
In the same way that most of the mainline denominations are reacting and responding, yes, with horror and, okay, what do we do about it? Are there concrete plans in place or anything like that? I, I do not know. We're all just waiting to see.
Sometimes we wait too long.
Sometimes we wait too long. You are correct. And if we ended up back on the tax rolls, our structural deficit would, it would explode.
So, Michelle, is it also maybe fair to say that, that this, to the extent that it's being addressed, it's being addressed at the conference and denominational level?
Denominational level.
Not at the local church level. So yes, it's, there are people looking, addressing that, yeah, yeah.
All our denominations are taking that on. The New York State Council of Churches is also looking at that. So that's where that, that's the layer at which those conversations are happening. Maybe I didn't say that clearly enough, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
For your time and attention and.
We have, we have pledge cards up here. And I'll, we'll stick around for a few minutes if people, yeah. Okay. And we have. And we have some paper copies of the financial materials, if anyone needs a paper copy.